Hello, everybody, and welcome to the 2022 edition of the Retail Now Town Hall. I'm Jim Roddy, the President and CEO of the RSPA, the Retail Solution Providers Association. Thrilled so many folks are joining us today, and if you're listening to this on demand, thank you very much for tuning in. So we are going to give an overview of the retail IT industries, number one trade show, networking event, and education conference, and let you know what we've kept from prior years and what's going to be new and improved going forward. And there's been a lot of early interest in Retail Now. You can see on your screen right there, the dates are July 24 through 26 at the Gaylord Palms in Orlando. And if you want more information at any time during this broadcast, you can go onto the URL that you see on your screen right now, go rsp.org/retailnow. Just make sure you're opening that at a different window. Don't close us off right now. Feel free to be browsing that site as we're speaking and as we present to you today, a good overview of Retail Now 2022. Thanks so much looking at the list of folks who have joined us already. A great list. We are going to be able to take your questions as well at the end, so feel free to start lining those up. We also did receive some early on. So again, we're going to give an overview, and then we will dive in to your questions. This will be all things Retail Now. All right, first, we have to touch on some housekeeping notes in terms of where we're going to be going today as this moves forward. And so first, all lines will be muted for the duration of today's call. As I mentioned, we received a number of questions with registrations, and we'll get as many questions as time allows. If you want to submit your questions during this call, you can see the control panel. We have a screen grab of what it might look like on your screen. Depends on if you have a tablet or a desktop or doing this on your phone. This session is going to be recorded, so if you want to relive it again, you can feel free to do that, or if you want to share it with any of your teammates so they could learn more about Retail Now, we're happy to have you do that. Because you registered for this event, you will receive a link to the recording and a summary Q and A document as a follow-up. And also, one other housekeeping note, for those who are listening live, you want to stick around for the duration until we get to the end of the Q and A. We have a special giveaway. We're giving away two $100 Marriott gift cards that you'll be able to use when you travel to Retail Now at the Gaylord Palms. So stick around for that. We will be giving that away to two folks who are attending this live session. All right, so let's dive into it. And the presenters today, again, I already introduced myself. We will be joined by Ashley Nagy, the Vice President of Member Services for the RSPA, and then Kathy Meter, the Vice President of Education Services. And again, we're going to give you a quick whirl of all things Retail Now. Turn it over to Ashley and give some sponsor recognition. Thanks, everybody who is supporting the RSPA and Retail Now in 2022. Ashley, welcome and take it away.
Thanks, Jim, and thanks, everyone, for being here today. We are so excited about Retail Now this year, and none of this would be possible without the generosity of our sponsors who continue to support us year in and year out. You'll see lots of names here that have been longtime supporters and some new names as well. So our Retail Now 2022 event sponsors are Acumatica, Blue Star, CoCard, Datastream Cyber Insurance, Quick POS, Ledger Pay, Shift4, and Tabit. And then our Platinum Annual Package sponsor is Blue Star. Our Gold Package sponsors are Brother, CoCard, Heartland, ScanSource, and Shift4. And then our Silver Package sponsors are Epson, Star, and Truist. And our Bronze Package sponsors are DataCap, Evo, Field Nation, Honeywell, Kitchen Armor, North American Bank Card, Toshiba, and Worldpay from FIS. And last but not least, we have our community sponsors. Now, I won't read through everyone here, but as you can see, we have our core sponsor communities, the Canadian Community sponsors, our Cannabis Community, our ISV Community, our W2W and NextGen Community, and then, of course, our media and association partners. A big thank you again to all of our sponsors for both Retail Now, our communities, and our annual sponsors. This could not be possible without you.
Thank you very much, Ashley. And one thing that's interesting, I think, with a lot of those sponsors is you do see a lot of familiar names on there, right? We've had a lot of folks who've been supporting the RSPA, not just for years, but for decades, but a lot of new names on there as well. The association itself has grown exponentially over the past 12 months, adding nearly 150 additional members while having a member retention rate of 100. And so we're keeping, you know, it is to make new friends and keep the old. And so we are continuing to keep members. They're seeing the value that the RSPA provides and then injecting a lot of new companies, new providers into the association, especially resellers and software developers are joining the RSPA. So really neat to see that, and again, have a great chance to meet all those folks in person at Retail Now. All right, so today's agenda, we're going to talk about why you should attend Retail Now. Then we'll also get into registration, exhibitor, and sponsorship updates. You know, we're less than 100 days out from the event. How are those moving along? We'll also talk about some of the networking highlights, what to expect. Kathy Meter is going to give you a deep dive into the education plan for this year from a track standpoint, and then also some specific education sessions. And then again, we will wrap up with Q and A. Again, feel free to start lining those up right now. Submit your question at any time. All right, I'll turn it back over to Ashley to talk about what is Retail Now.
Thanks, Jim. So for those of you that have not been to Retail Now before, this is the place where the industry meets. So at Retail Now, you'll see VARs, ISVs, vendors, and distributors. We have lots of new faces that'll be at the show, and as Jim shared earlier, lots of our core members that have been with us throughout the history of the association and as long as we've been having the event. So you'll see very well-established vendors, ISVs, and VARs across the industry. The key areas of focus for the majority of our members are the top four verticals that you see here, restaurant, retail, grocery, and cannabis. So these are those overarching umbrellas. About north of 60% of our member community overall is made up of VARs, about 20% are ISVs, and then about 15% or so are made up of our core vendors and distributors. So this is the gathering place. We'll have a show floor that we're going to dive deeper into here in the next few minutes. We're also going to have a ton of education that Kathy is going to touch on. And then there is a tremendous amount of networking that happens between sessions, between the exhibit hall, and all throughout the evenings at the show. So this is the place to be. Now, Jim, I'll turn it back to you for the agenda.
Yeah, here's a quick look at the overall agenda. So for folks who haven't been to the event in the past, the show kicks off on Sunday night. You'll see early, we start at 4:00, starting off with ISV and cannabis receptions, followed by a Canadian community event as well. And then we open up the show floor at 6:30 PM for a couple hours. We have what we call our first look reception, where there will be all sorts of treats to enjoy, and then also give you a first glance that you can walk around the show floor and get to, you know, again, meet your old friends and make some new ones. Then on Monday, it is a full day. We start off with the exhibit hall, breakfast in the exhibit hall from 8:00 AM until 1:00 PM, and that wraps up lunches in the exhibit hall as well. Then we head over to the general session for about 75 minutes, so everybody can get together. And then we have the first set of education breakouts going from 3:15 to 5:30 PM. And then we'll wrap up the evening with our special awards program that we're bringing back this year. That's going to be in a separate section. Last year, we did that on the show floor, but again, based on the feedback we got from folks, we were looking for something that's a little more special than being in the mix of the show floor. So what you're going to have on the show floor this year is exhibits, you know, starting off with breakfast, ending with lunch, and exhibit hall in between, and then everything else is going to happen in breakout rooms or in the main session area. And then Tuesday, we're back in the exhibit hall, 8 until 1:00, and then we have education breakouts in the early part of the afternoon, and then you can head on home in the evening if you want, or hang out at the Gaylord Palms a little bit longer. If you want to see an expanded agenda, you can see the URL on your screen there is go rsp.org/retailnow. And if you're interested in sponsoring any of these sessions or any of the, what Ashley had mentioned before, you can reach out to her at membership@gospa.org. Again, again, so go rsp.org/retailnow or email membership@gospa.org. Ashley, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thanks, Jim. So taking a deeper dive into who will be there. So when we think about Retail Now as a whole, right, so a lot of times we get the questions of who's going to be in attendance, will there be any end users there? So we won't have any end users there, but everybody that attends Retail Now is either distributing, manufacturing hardware of some sort, or a software solution, or they're reselling it. So the folks that attend Retail Now are there to see and understand what's new, what's trending, what's different, connect with partners that they're already working with. And it just provides that forum to be able to have those connections happen and then also take advantage of the industry's specific content and education. And so those are the folks that will be in attendance at the show. So we'll have VARs, we'll have ISVs, we'll have vendors. Also, within that VAR space, you'll see ISOs in attendance as well. And then in terms of the show floor, so currently, we are actually, we needed to update the slide here in the last day because we have picked up a few more booths. We are actually 85% sold out on the show floor. On the show floor, though, is where everything happens during that time. So we have over 12, excuse me, 12 hours of show floor time, including that first look reception that Jim mentioned on Sunday evening. So this is the place for all attendees to gather, visit with exhibitors and vendors in their booths. You know, a lot of times we get questions of are there other things that happen during the show floor? Are there outside meetings or education sessions? And the answer is no. We don't have anything that is RSPA hosted conflicting with the show floor. So everybody gathers there. We'll have breakfast on the show floor. We'll also have lunch on the show floor. We're going to have a number of different things happening to drive traffic to all areas of the show floor during this event. So we are really excited and fully anticipate that the show floor will be sold out here in the next month or so as we march towards July. And then here, just to get a visual in terms of the show floor map or layout, so you can see that we have the entrance there at the bottom, and then there will be several avenues and options to reach out and see the vendors that are going to be there on the show floor. We'll also have a number of activities and things to drive traffic throughout as well. And as I mentioned earlier, we'll also have the meals in the morning and in the afternoon for lunch as well. And then community receptions. So we are very excited. We will be having several receptions and/or breakfast during the event. And again, so when we talk about the ISV and cannabis community reception, that's going to be on Sunday afternoon. Definitely encourage folks to attend that event. Last year, we had our cannabis networking session at Retail Now, and it was completely full. If you attended it, it was standing room only. We expect that again this year. And new is the ISV networking reception during that time as well. So we're anticipating a large attendance there, given that over half of our show floor is filled with ISVs that are exhibiting. We certainly anticipate a large crowd for that event as well. Then our Canadian community will also have a networking event on Sunday afternoon leading up to our reception on the show floor. So another great opportunity to meet and network with our Canadian members. For some of them, they haven't been able to attend our event or any of our sessions here in the last few years just from a travel standpoint. So we're excited to welcome everybody back again. And for NextGen and W2W communities, we will have networking breakfast on Monday and Tuesday. So looking forward to those events as well. And if you have any questions on any of these communities or committees, feel free to reach out to me, and I'm happy to share more information and additional ways for folks across the community to engage. Vendor meetings and receptions. So in addition to some of the things that we talked about earlier, like the show floor, we have show floor meeting space if you have to, if you're looking for private meeting rooms while the show floor is open. Again, we want everybody to stay on the show floor and be active and engaged there. But for evening receptions or meeting spaces that are outside of what I'll call the RSPA show hours, meaning our education sessions or the show floor. So later in the evening, a lot of our vendors like to take advantage of the discounted pricing to be able to have space at the show, to have their own receptions and/or trainings outside of the RSPA event. So we do have some availability left. It is filling up quickly. If you're looking to do a reception, you can also leverage our discounts too in hosting that reception from a F and B standpoint as well for our vendors. So please reach out if you have any questions there as well. Again, you can reach me at membership@gospa.org. And I'll turn it over to Jim.
Great, thanks, Ashley. And you can see on here, this is for those, again, who are not familiar with Retail Now. Again, we've added so many new members in the past 12 months. Some of them have not had the Retail Now experience before. You can just see some of the numbers that we have here based on what happened last year. So starting the upper left-hand corner, we had 38% more VAR registrations than we did in the prior show, which was 2019. Of course, we took off 2020 due to the COVID crisis. So again, this has really become a VAR-centric show. Like Ashley said, we don't have merchants who would be coming to the booth, but we would have folks who work with 100, 200, 500 merchants who would come to your booth, and they could go and take your product into those different storefronts. Last year, we also had 35 first-time exhibitors, and then we had 1,305 registrants. That is by no means an all-time record from an RSPA standpoint. We're looking this year to get back closer to that 2,000 registrant and attendee mark. But coming out of COVID, it was like the first show in forever, is what it seemed. And so it was really, really strong in those terms. And so we think coming out of COVID, if we had 1,300 people, we're going to be in that 2,000 attendee range this year in Retail Now 2022, and registrations are pacing in that direction right now. And then starting on the bottom of this graphic right here, the 161 active members of the cannabis community attended Retail Now 2021, which is great, and that group has actually grown to over 200 members now in 2022. And we kicked off last year Retail Now 2021 with the first ever cannabis community reception. We're like, you know, the show's back from COVID, and we've never had this reception before. People are going to show up, and it was just like Ashley said, overflowing there at the reception. So looking forward to doing that again this year. We also saw a big surge in software developer attendees as well. We had over 230 individuals representing ISV organizations. And as Ashley mentioned earlier, you know, the number of ISVs exhibiting on the show floor, it's about half of the show floor, are software developers. And then we've seen the number of ISVs who make up the RSPA membership that always hovered around, you know, between 13 to 15%. Now it's 20% of the association fit into that ISV category. We also set a new record for the breakout sessions. We had for a lot of them, you know, a lot of seats set up, and we still had standing room only. So an average 54 individuals per breakout session. That's from, you know, the first breakout session all the way through the last. And then we asked if folks would attend Retail Now in 2022. And again, this is why we think we're going to have another strong year. 89% would recommend the event to a friend, and 95% said they plan to attend in 2022. So again, if you're looking for specifics, that's Retail Now 2021 by the numbers, and I'd say we are all trending in this direction to surpass these numbers in 2022. And now going to turn it over to RSPA VP of Educational Services, Kathy Meter, who has led the way, putting together a tremendous educational program. Kathy, take it away.
Thanks, Jim. We are pleased to announce that this year, our keynote speaker for Retail Now will be Duncan Wardell. Duncan is the former Head of Innovation and Creativity at Walt Disney, where he managed teams at the Disney Parks, Lucas Films, Marvel, and Pixar, helping them to create new and exciting experiences for customers around the world. You don't want to miss the general session as he talks about embedding innovation into our organizations by facilitating fresh thinking and new ideas. Once again, we will have education tracks during the afternoons on Monday and Tuesday. We have a total of six education tracks with 24 breakout sessions. New this year, we have added an ISV education track. This is content developed with ISV members in mind. We will also have our sales and customer service track. This track combines our traditional sales and marketing and customer services track all into one. And back by popular demand, as the RSPA's cannabis community continues to grow, so does the demand for education. This contact will be focused specifically on retail technology in the cannabis space. In addition to these tracks, we will also have our traditional tracks of next-generation technologies, highlighting cutting-edge solutions in our industry, executive education, content developed with VARs and ISV leaders in mind, and security and legal, trending information about security and legal issues that impact members.
Before we turn it back to Ashley Nagy, so what Kathy just showed you there, that was only a taste of what you're going to see. You know, we mentioned go to rsp, go rsp.org/retailnow, and you can see the agenda. We don't have it fully formed right now. We're putting the finishing touches on it. And so Kathy was sharing with you just a taste of what you're going to see there. Again, 24 sessions that you can prepare for. So looking forward to that. Kathy, or Ashley, let's turn over you quickly for the Bring One More program, because folks can't be in every education session at the same time, right? We have six going on concurrently. You can't be there in the same space. So we're encouraging folks to bring one more staff member so you can cover the education sessions and more. So Ashley, you want to explain what Bring One More is?
Yeah, thanks, Jim. So Bring One More, we did this this past year at Retail Now, and it was a huge success. So we're excited to welcome this back again. So for our VARs, DISVs, those are our direct-selling ISVs and exhibiting companies, for those who purchase a pass to the show, you will get a free pass to bring one more from your team. So it's one per company that will do this for, but we're really excited because, as Jim mentioned, everybody wants to attend everything, and we hear every year, I can't be everywhere, but I need to have more folks from my team have exposure, to make new connections, and also to certainly leverage the education that Kathy shared. So this Bring One More opportunity is huge to be able to, and I know a lot of us are hiring new folks for their teams too. So this is a great chance to bring some new folks from your team as well. So if you haven't already, reach out to us at membership@gospa.org, and we will send over the Bring One More code for your team.
Fabulous, thank you, Ashley. And because we're in, you know, the Gaylord Palms and near Disney, we have some additional attendance perks beyond what you're going to see on the show floor, in the hallways, in the education sessions. And let's turn it back to Kathy to tell us all about some of these attendance perks. Kathy?
Thanks, Jim. If you are attending Retail Now this year, you will have access to discounted Walt Disney World tickets. For more information or to purchase those discounted tickets, you can visit the Retail Now website and click on the venues tab. There's a link there that will take you to more information about the discount as well as how to purchase those tickets. And if you're not interested in the Disney parks and you want to just stick around the hotel, there's still a lot to do, including an onsite water park, a state-of-the-art spa, as well as lots of food and shopping outlets. So there's something for everybody, not a lack of things to do down there in Orlando. Jim, back to you.
Wonderful, thank you. And, you know, we have the Bring One More program for being a coworker, and then there's like, what Kathy just described is almost like a bring your spouse and bring your kids kind of thing, and that's what I'm planning on doing. My wife and daughter are planning on attending the event as well and taking advantage of everything you saw on that prior slide there. All right, Ashley, if you can talk about some of the, this is kind of our action slide in terms of, we've shared a ton of information. What should everybody viewing and listening to this, what actions do you recommend they take to take full advantage of the full Retail Now experience?
Thanks, Jim. So if you haven't already, you definitely want to register for Retail Now. So the early bird registration ends on June 13th, and that's quite a cost savings for all of our members across the board. So if you haven't registered, please register by June 13th so that you can take advantage of that early price. And I believe it's a 35% discount on the cost of the registration. And then also, as I mentioned earlier, the Bring One More, so you want to make sure that you leverage that for your team. And then the other big one that's creeping up quickly is to book your hotel room. If you have not already, it's a 50% cost savings off of the street pricing for the hotel. So please book your room. You can go out and do that today. Make sure you get that secured for you and your team. If you have any questions there as well, just let us know. And then I mentioned earlier about the meeting space. So if your team, if you're a vendor and you're looking to have a reception or a training or something onsite, reach out. We have a few spots left for that. I know some of our vendors have already booked theirs well in advance of the show, and some others are finalizing their details now. But if you haven't already, please reach out, and we'll get you guys on board for that as well. If you have any questions, again, membership@gospa.org. Jim, I'll turn it back over to you.
Great, thank you, Ashley, and thank you, Kathy. And now it is time for our questions. And so this is your opportunity again to ask us anything related to Retail Now, RSPA, life guidance, if you want any advice, relationship advice, it probably isn't the best source for you, but anything that you ask, we will attempt to answer. Maybe I shouldn't have left it that broad. We'll consider answering it. I know some of our members would love to be able to put us on the spot. So use that Q and A function and submit your questions. The first one we have that has come in, Ashley, if you can take this one, it's from Peter. Peter asks, do you have email marketing service that can send email to the attendees?
So we do not have email marketing service to send emails to the attendees, but if you're interested in, some of our sponsorships do have social media, spotlights, and/or a few of them do have opportunities to be able to connect with the community. But I would say, reach out to membership@gospa.org and let us help you with some other ways to connect with folks in the community.
Great, thank you, Ashley. Next one comes from Diana, and it kind of ties in with about reaching out to attendees. It says, do you provide a list of attendees in advance?
So the answer is yes and no. So in terms of attendee lists in advance, the only members that get access to the attendee list is our Platinum sponsors. And then outside of that, we do not share our list. We do not sell our list. This is the time of the year, though, that we get a lot of questions around, hey, you know, I'm sure everybody on this call probably has gotten an email that says, hey, would you like to have access to XYZ list? Or sometimes we'll say the Retail Now list. If you get communications like that, I can assure you, it is not from us, and we are not soliciting the list for the question.
If you get one of those, send it to your junk folder. Don't respond to those. They sound good, right? They sound like they've got the inside scoop on who's attending Retail Now. They don't. And we've had some folks reach out and say, can you give me a sample? And sometimes they will have some individuals who are members, and they could fully into doing that, but it is not a Retail Now list, like Ashley just said. If you're a Platinum sponsor, you know, that's where there's some access to it. But we do not do that, so please do not fall for that. And part of the reason why we don't broadly send out the list and have it, you know, just available in general for sale is because we want our attendees to have a good experience in terms of, and I can say, I know somebody who just registered for another show, and they just get bombarded with every single person who's exhibiting at the event. So again, we want everybody who signs up for this event to meet the partners that they want and not have a potentially negative experience. All right, next question comes in from Scott, and Kathy, I'm hoping you can handle this. Will there be a mask requirement for all attendees at the show? Will there be any COVID protocols in place?
No, Jim, we will be back to business as usual for Retail Now this year.
Got it, great, thank you. Now, all the events I've attended this year have been the same way. If you want to wear a mask, by all means, you can go ahead and do that, kind of like what they're doing on airplanes right now, if you want to do that. So wonderful, thank you. Next question from Bobby. Bobby says, the future of RSPA, not just bull crap, but really, what is the future? So that is a great question. Happy to answer that from an RSPA standpoint. So anybody who attended Inspire, we talked about this right from the get-go in terms of where is the industry heading? And so where is the RSPA heading as well? And so where is the RSPA heading as well? And what we see is, the center of the universe for this channel is the combination of the VARs, and then also software developers. And it's hard to even say that they're too separate right now, because we see a lot of VARs who are either acquiring software companies, adding their own software, either they're adapting some current things that they have, or coming up with their own kind of niche software. Then we have some folks who are really acting like VARs, we call them DISDs, Direct Independent Software Developers, and they are acting like a reseller, but instead of selling somebody else's hardware, it's, or selling somebody else's software, they're going to market with their own oftentimes niche-oriented software as well. And that's kind of been a big boost, where we talked about, you know, all the software developers that we've mentioned. So the future, that's where we think is really the heart of it. Again, it's still that, used to be called dealers, used to be called resellers, now it's kind of been that VAR, Direct Independent Software Developer, Solution Provider. That is the center of our universe, and continues to be the center of our universe. And will continue to be all-inclusive as well, in terms of folks who play a lot, you know, exclusive to the channel, and then folks who are just getting started in the channel as well, and trying out to see how well that model works for them. Or if maybe they're too early to really have a strong channel, right? They might be only going to market with a couple other different solution provider or reseller partners. And so, like Ashley had mentioned before, you know, the different constituencies that we have, we're still focused on the core verticals of restaurant, retail, grocery, and then the emerging market is cannabis. But we're going to continue to serve those VARs, those ISVs, the distributors, the vendors, the ISOs, the Payfax, right, the payment facilitators, those are ISVs who take on a stronger part of the payment to it. So it's really anybody who's using that indirect in that channel model, that's who we have, that's who we've been serving, and that's who we will continue to serve as well. So I hope that was a non-bull crap answer for you Bobby. And I will say, we are bullish about the future. I mentioned earlier about the growth numbers that we've had. We've really seen folks seeing the value in the channel, the value in VARs, and we think it's a bright future ahead. It's been a really great last 12, 18 months coming out of COVID for the RSPA, and we see even a brighter future ahead. So again, Bobby, if you have any, need any more follow-up answers, follow-up details, let us know. And again, want to make sure folks stick around. At the end of the Q&amp;A session here, we will give away two $100 Marriott gift cards. All right, so thanks for that question Bobby. Next, Kathy, if you can take this one, it comes from Barbara. She says, is there transportation to and from the Orlando airport?
There is no transportation that is run by the Retail Now or the hotel. The best way to get from the airport to the hotel is certainly to use Uber or Lyft. And at the Orlando airport, those are readily available.
Great, fabulous, thank you for that. We have a question from Nancy, and Ashley, I'll direct this towards you. Nancy says, can you go over the Bring One More program again, please?
Yes, so the way the Bring One More program works is, once I purchase a pass, I get one additional pass for free to bring somebody else from my company. And so we're doing that one free per company. So as an example, if I have my own reseller business, I purchase my pass, and then I can bring Jim as my coworker along with me to the show for free. If I am an exhibiting vendor outside of my booth passes that are included with my booth, if I purchase the pass for Peggy to attend, then I can also get, use that code to bring Nicole for free. So I hope that helps.
And just to clarify, this is not a buy one, get one, right? Where if you-
Correct, you get one free per company.
That's right. So if you get one, and you're, just to follow your analogy, you're going to buy one, I get to be your Bring One More. Kathy would pay for his, Gabby Core would have to pay for hers. It's not you buy two, you get two free. We came up with this program to really help, again, back to Bobby's question, like who's the heart? The SMB reseller, the SMB ISV is really the heart. This is to help those smaller organizations bring more than one person to the event, as opposed to let the larger companies buy only half the passes they did in the past. Am I explaining that correctly?
Correct.
Great, thanks for your question Nancy. Again, if you need more clarifications, let us know. Next question comes in from Jesse, and Jesse says, the 24th is on a Sunday. Yes, so that is the first day of the show. Will that be a full day of learning classes? Will there be two full days of learning classes, or one and a half? So Kathy, can you take that one?
Sure. So on Sunday, mid-afternoon, we'll start with the receptions, and then Sunday evening is our welcome reception. So there is no education on Sunday, it's opportunities for networking and the show floor. And then on Monday and Tuesday, the agenda runs the same. In the morning, from 8:00 to 1:00, the show floor will be open, and then we close the show floor. And in the afternoons, we will run our education sessions. So education will be scheduled Monday afternoon and Tuesday afternoon. For the full agenda, and to see which classes are taking place, which days and what times, feel free to visit the Retail Now website, which is listed on the screen here, we have our full agenda.
Fabulous, thank you for the question Jesse, and thank you for the answer. Kathy, Kathy, let's stick with you. Next question comes from Barbara. She says, will the number of entrance doors to the show hall be restricted to one door, similar to the 2021 show?
Yeah, we will have everybody entering through the same entranceway this year. The thing that would be a little bit different this year is we have new and creative ideas for moving traffic around the show floor. And so you can expect that we'll see lots of traffic in all areas of our show floor.
Got it, great, thank you. All right, Joe has a question. Kathy, I'll direct this towards you. Are you still looking for speakers?
Not at this time. I'm happy to say we have filled all of our slots. We had an overwhelming number of submissions, and that we were super excited about, and we have filled all of our slots. We're going to have some great education, and really hope that, you know, lots of people are able to come and take advantage of that.
Yeah, and we closed up the call for speakers, was that two weeks ago, three weeks ago? Time, time just blends together at this point.
March 21st.
Got it, all right. So that was almost a month ago that we, we closed that up. But yeah, you're right, we, if you would have had 12 education tracks and 48 sessions, I think we still would have had some extra speakers there. So yeah, the responses here was phenomenal. Great, all right, thanks for the question Joe. Michael asked a question, do booth personnel pick up their badge at the registration desk? Ashley, do you know the answer to that one? Or would that be Kathy? I'm not sure.
So if they are actually attending the show, then yes, they'll pick, they'll get their badges at the registration desk. If it is just a team to construct the booths, and I think that might be where that question's headed. He can certainly reach out to us at membership@gorspa.org, and we'll share the details, but we do have a pass for folks like that, that are just there to strictly do setup and not engage with the, you know, with the show, they're just building out the booth itself. So happy to help with that as a follow-up.
Great, yeah. So Michael, if you need more specifics, you can reach out to membership@gorspa.org. And then Kathy, again, just for folks who have never been to the event before, there's like one area where pretty much everybody goes outside of those, you know, folks who are doing the setup to get their badge. I guess if you can paint that picture for folks who might not be familiar with it.
Are you talking about the registration desk?
Yes.
Yep, so the, our registration desk will be in the conference center on the lowest level. And if you visit the website, it will tell you specifically which exhibit halls Retail Now is being held in, and our registration desk will be located directly outside of those exhibit halls.
Great, wonderful, thank you for that. Question here from Chris, he says 50, it says 50% of the show floor ISVs, question mark. So Ashley, I guess if you want to dive into that a little bit, in terms of clarifying that, then I guess maybe talk about a little bit more of the ISV resurgence or surge that we've seen over the past 12 to 18 months.
Yeah, so right at, or I think we've surpassed the 50% mark of our exhibitors are actually ISVs that are exhibiting at the show. So as we shared earlier, in terms of our members that we've brought on in the past 12 months, it's close to 150 new members. We certainly have lots of resellers that have joined, but the next largest group of folks that have joined are ISVs. So there are all sorts of, certainly they fall under those four key verticals that we talked about earlier, being hospitality, retail, grocery, and cannabis. But we have all sorts of new ISV companies that are joining. We also have a number of startups that are in that mix as well. So I hope that helps clarify, and I'm always happy to connect one-on-one, to see if there are, you know, specifics that folks are looking for.
Yeah, great, thank you. And you know, we've seen, again, the RSPA keeping up with, with the industry, we have added to the number of services that we provide to our VAR members, right? That's been strong for, you know, years and years, and continue to add to that. But the last two years, we've really increased the ISV offering as well, because we found out, VARs want to talk to ISVs, vendors want to talk to ISVs, ISVs want to talk to other folks. And if anybody's listening, like what's an ISV, independent software vendor, right? So it's a software developer. So we have added other benefits for the ISVs, in terms of, we have a niche and startup ISV community that doesn't just meet at Retail Now, they meet every six weeks or so online. It's ISV executives getting together and wrestling through that information. You've seen that we have a special track now at Retail Now. We also have them separated out in the solution center that's on the RSPA website. It's your opportunity to see who a lot of the vendor members are from an RSPA standpoint as well. And then we're also, you know, there's just, building that community, the more ISVs that we have, the more folks realize these are new partners, niche software applications, and then the ISVs want to be able to learn from each other as well. So again, you know, there's, Jim Collins talks about the tyranny of the or versus the genius of the and. And so it's not, do we serve resellers or ISVs? We're realizing that there's a lot of overlap that they have, and we can, you know, have the genius of the and. The RSPA has been serving the last several years, resellers, VARs, and software developers as well. And again, it's getting more difficult to be able to tell them apart, so. All right, next question is from Nancy. Again, line up your questions, we've only got at the most about 15 minutes left. So Nancy, again, she asked, Retail Now Expo Hall is open 8:00 to 1:00 p.m. each day. After 1:00 p.m., the expo hall closes. Ashley, do you want to take that one about the expo hall?
Correct, yes. So once the expo hall closes, then we'll go into general session and our education tracks. And then later in the evening is where you'll see the vendor meetings and receptions taking place as well. And as we shared earlier, the breakfast and lunches will be in the exhibit hall. So once that hall closes, then we encourage everyone, and I get the question all the time, you know, hey, I'm exhibiting, or I'm a vendor, should I still attend the education? Or what do you recommend I do? I recommend you attend everything. So the networking events, the show floor, of course, and then of course, the education, because that's really where a lot of those one-on-one conversations happen. You know, it's at all different opportunities, you never know who you're going to bump into or get introduced to by, you know, someone else at the show. So it's a fantastic opportunity to network and engage.
Yeah, thank you Ashley. So Nancy, we have 12 total hours of show floor time, which has been increasing, you know, the last several years. I know there was a period of time where it was maybe only eight and a half or nine hours that the show floor was open. So that's kind of our target, our best practice guideline, is to get between 11 and 12 hours available from a show floor time standpoint. And also, we've seen events where they have education going on at the same time, or going on in different corners of the show floor. That's not how this is, you know, in terms of when the show floor is open, that's the only thing going on, right? It's people on the show floor and people in the meeting rooms on the show floor as well. So somebody might technically have longer show floor hours, but they have education going on at the same time, and so you're getting far less traffic in there as well. So thanks for the question Nancy, and hopefully that did answer it for you. Yeah, we have five hours each of those days, Monday and Tuesday, and then two hours on Sunday night. The next, it's a comment from Harry Mitchell, and I think, I'm not sure what Harry was responding to, but it just says yay. And so Harry, I'm taking that as, because Harry's in Canada, and we only had, because of COVID last year, a couple Canadians able to show up. Harry, we're thrilled to welcome you back, we will do it with open arms, can't wait to see you there, big hug coming your way. And Harry just messaged again, correct. So yeah, very much looking forward to it. I do remember hearing feedback from one of our Canadian members, it was not Harry, but another member, when we were promoting everything going on at Retail Now and sending out the emails, you know, they weren't able to go, and they said, this is just mean, that you're telling us all the good things that are going on, we're unable to attend. So we're glad that, you know, the border's going to be open this year, and are very much looking forward to welcoming back our Canadian community members to Retail Now. All right, next question comes from Robert. He says, do you have to register to attend the community events? Who wants to take that one? Kathy or Ashley?
I can take that one.
Yeah, thanks.
The answer is yes. Registration is required, and a badge is required to enter any of the networking events, the show floor, or the education events.
Got it, so things are all happening within the, our Retail Now bubble, right? You can't just wander into those and not register for the show.
Correct.
Got it, thank you. All right, appreciate that Kathy. Next question comes from Brian, and he says, so how early can we check into the resort? Or how many days after the show can we stay at the resort at a discount rate? He says, asking for a friend. So Kathy, can you answer Brian's friend's question?
Sure. I'll start with the rate. The discount rate is extended through July the 30th. Obviously, that's based on, you know, availability, you know, and that the hotel is not sold out for any of those dates. And then the second piece about early check-in, that too is based on availability. I believe checking at the hotel is at 4:00 p.m. I think your best bet is to call the hotel the day before your arrival, or the morning of your arrival, to see if, you know, they have anything that would be available.
Great, thank you Kathy. Brian, hopefully that was the details you were looking for. Feel free to weigh in with another question, or you can reach out to us as well. You know, the RSPA, we're happy to have, you know, one-on-one communications with our members, that's really leading to a lot of that, you know, 100% renewal rate that we had. And Kathy, I guess if you can add on to that, in terms of, we touched earlier about the hotel block has been sold out in advance of the show before, I guess, can you give a little bit more details with that, in terms of, are we on pace to have that happen again? And what should folks do?
Absolutely. So we have, even last year, our hotel, our hotel block sold out ahead of our, ahead of our show. Leisure travel right now is in very high demand, especially summertime in Orlando, so I would not wait a minute longer to book your room. As Ashley mentioned, our rate, our conference rate for rooms is about 50% off the current rack rate to the public. So it's a, it's a great time, if you were planning to go to Orlando, wanted to go to Orlando, this is a, this is a great way to take advantage of a really good deal. But those hotel rooms will go very quickly.
Yeah, and Kathy, can you talk about that global trend? Because I think that can help folks, not just for Retail Now, but a lot of folks are doing travel in general, or going to other events. What have you been seeing, and because you're talking to a lot of folks inside the industry, like you mentioned leisure travel before, I mean, right in the middle of COVID, what, like hotels were at like 2% occupancy. What's the trend now, and what should folks do in response to it?
Hotels are running at 90%, 90 to 100% occupancy right now. There are a lot of people who are traveling, who are willing to pay to travel. And if you, you know, if you have tried to book a hotel, you know, for personal or for leisure, hotel rates are skyrocketing. And so there's a war for, there's a war for rooms, there's a war for price. And so my, my rule is always, don't wait, book early, because you don't want to miss out on that opportunity. And as we mentioned, the block rate for Retail Now is a significant, significant discount off what you would pay if you were simply trying to reserve a room for your own vacation.
Thank you. I just got the link to register for another industry event that takes place in June, and they had like six different hotels on there. And I tried the first three and they were all sold out. And I was like, should I even try the other three? Like what in the world path are we going down, going down here? And Kathy, is it accurate to say, people are traveling more and because of COVID, they're traveling internationally less and domestic more? And so that's part of where you're seeing as well, the spike? Is that accurate to say?
Yeah, I think, I think that's, I think that's accurate. Now Orlando always has, you know, Orlando always has very high international travel. But I think as things continue to open up everywhere, it's just, it's just going to continue to go, to go up.
Wonderful, great, thank you about that. That looks like all the questions that we have, and we're right before the top of the hour. If anybody has anything else, feel free to give us a quick question right now because we're about to do our gift card giveaway. But if you do have one more question or so, we'll be able to get to those. Again, you can also reach out anytime to membership@gorspa.org. And again, if you want to register for the event, book your room, et cetera, et cetera, you see the URL on your screen right there, gorspa.org forward slash retail now. And so we have a giveaway. We mentioned at the outset that we were going to give away two $100 gift cards, Marriott gift cards that you can use at the resort when you attend Retail Now. And so I was going to say drum roll, please, and this is a great thing. When we say drum roll, please at Retail Now, you'll actually hear somebody on a drum or everybody doing it. But do it in the safety of your own home, at your desk there. So the winner of the first $100 gift card is Ed Wallace. Ed, congratulations. And then the winner of gift card number two is, see if I pronounce his name right. The first name I'll get correct, Glenn Krizky, K-R-I-C-Z-K-Y. So I believe it's Glenn Krizky. Ed Wallace are the two winners of our $100 Marriott gift card. Thank you, Ed and Glenn, for weighing in. And then we just got one more comment from Joe saying, thank you, good session. We appreciate it. We enjoy sharing with everybody the update in terms of where Retail Now is and where it's going. Again, as you can see, you know, there's a lot of great things traditionally that makes Retail Now the number one industry trade show. You can see a lot of the new things we've continued to add this year as we expand the benefit offering to all of our members, whether you're a VAR, an ISV, a vendor, or distributor, and fitting in there. So really looking forward to seeing everybody July 24th through 26th at Retail Now at the Gaylord Palms in Orlando, Florida. Thank you, everybody, for your time and thanks, everybody, for your participation today. Have a tremendous rest of your day. Goodbye, everybody.